Good evening, I'm Alisa Smith from the Department of Television Resources and Web Services. Welcome to the Board of Education Board Meeting for Thursday, February 24th, 2011. This meeting will begin with a special presentation for Black History Month. The legislative agenda will focus on the Equity in Education Funding Act. Under the Budget Consent Agenda, the Board will discuss spending requirements and the High Point High School easement. Under the Consent Agenda, the Board will review Proclaimations for Commemorating Prince George's County History Day Competition, National History Month, National Education Association's Read Across America Day, National Women's History Month, and Irish American Heritage Month, and the School System and Alternative Governance Option for Priority Schools. Emergency items will cover the adoption of the FY 2012 Annual Operating Budget and the Retirement Incentive Program. Under the Unfinished Business Agenda, the Board will review Board Policy 4150, Leave of Absence. And now, the February 24th Board Meeting will begin.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2011 Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. As we begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. At this time, I would ask Ms. Boston if she would lead the Board in prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Jackson, call roll, please.
Mr. Armwood? Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Ms. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Jacob?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, prior to adopting the agenda, please note the following changes. Add item 11.1 Retirement Incentive Program and item 11.2, which is House Bill 1055, the Prince George's County Wireless Telecommunications Towers. Prohibition on public school property has been added as an emergency item. May I please have a motion to adopt the February 24th, 2011 Board Meeting Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the following meeting minutes? January 20, 2011 Board Meeting. The January 25th, 2011 Budget Work Session. The February 1st, 2011 Budget Work Session. The February 8th, 2011 Budget Work Session Minutes. And the February 10th, 2011 System Oversight Meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes as read. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Thank you. We now have a very special presentation by the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest Winners. Ms. June White-Dillard, please come forward.
Evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Education. We thank you for this opportunity to make special presentations to our high school students for our Black History Month project for 2011 NAACP. I would like to thank Superintendent Hyde and Ms. Phyllis Evans in our Social Studies Department for assisting us in making this a wonderful competition for our Black History Month program. And at this time, I would like to ask our President, Bob Ross, our Executive Committee Members, Celeste Williamson, Arthur Whitaker, to come forward with me to make these four awards this evening. We have four prizes to give out. The topic for the essay was how would Dr. King look at us today in terms of what's happening in our society? And we have two winners among the 11th and 12th graders and two winners among the 9th and 10th graders. Our first winner is the first, for first prize, in the 11th and 12th graders is Sarah Corber. And Sarah is an 11th grade student at Northwestern. Her sponsor is Southern Maryland Corporation. This is their special day, so they're not able to be with us this evening. Present with Sarah this evening is her mother, I mean, is her mother's substitute while she's here with us, since she's a foreign exchange student, Patricia Cronor. Where is Bob? Sarah?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, just at the chair.
You had to be A-check.
Our second prize winner for the 11th and 12th graders is Sarah Tanvier. She is a 12th grader at Herbert Flowers High School. Sarah? Her sponsor is Local 2250, and we're going to ask Mr. Shear if he will join us as representing Local 2250. Her sponsored her award of $500. Her mother and sister are with her tonight. Her mother, Amila Tanvier, and her sister, Safura Tanvier. Would you come up? That's her check. Okay, come. Moving behind her.
Yeah, I'll be behind.
Our first prize winner for 9th and 10th graders is Wasis Ali. Wasis? Wasis is a 10th grader at Duval High School. And with him tonight is his sister, Sahir Ali. And his sponsor is G.S. Proctor and Associates. And Sherri Sims is with us tonight as his sponsor. Our second prize winner is Damisha Edwards. And she is a 9th grader at Herbert Flowers High School. And her sponsor is My Law Office. And her mother is with her tonight, Shalanda Edwards. Thank you very much. And if we could have the Board of Education join us, we'd like to have one big photo with everybody.
Thank you to the NAACP, Ms. June White-Dillard, and Mr. Bob Ross, and all your members. I would also add that we would very much like to hear, or at least read, the essays that were presented. So if that's fine with you or your committee in terms of how that works, we would love to also have that opportunity. Thank you. Colleagues, it's now time for a news break in honor of Black History Month. They're ready, they're ready.
We shall overcome, yes we can!
I'm still the greatest of all time!
There were 6,000 applicants, and they only selected 23.
Dr. Daniel Hale Williams.
Mary McLeod Bethune.
Alice Walker.
Phyllis Wheatley.
With Hope.
Good morning!
Prince George's County Public Schools, celebrating African-American history.
Have you ever wondered how you get your transported foods fresh? Well, you could thank Frederick Mckelly Jones for that. Frederick Mckelly Jones was known for his invention of the practical refrigerating system for railroad carts and trucks. Jones was born on May 17th, 1893, in Cincinnati, Ohio. He was orphaned at the age of nine and then raised by a priest in Kentucky. At the age of 16, Jones got a job as an apprentice automobile mechanic. He gained more knowledge about his occupation by teaching himself. In 1912, Jones worked as a mechanic on a large farm. He later served in the U.S. Army in World War I. After he finished his service, he began to teach himself how to build electronics. He also built a transmitter for his town's new radio station. In 1935, Jones invented a portable cooling unit for trucks carrying perishable food. He received a patent for it in 1940. Jones' air coolers for trains, ships, and aircraft made it possible for the first time to transport perishable food. With Jones' invention, the air cooling system helped preserve blood and food to carry to hospitals during World War II. He became the first African-American to be elected into the American Society of Refrigeration Engineers.
Have you ever wondered who improved the light bulb? The answer is Louis Latimer. He was an inventor of an improved process for manufacturing light bulb carbon filaments in 1881. He was born in Chelsea, Massachusetts, on September 4th, 1848. About 1885, Latimer found stable employment with the Edison Electric Light Company of New York. During his lifetime, he worked with Alexander Bell and Thomas Edison. He was the only black member of an exclusive social group, the Edison Pioneers, and a noted scientist. Louis Latimer had a dream. Do you?
Benjamin S. Carson is an American neurosurgeon and the Director of Pediatric Neurosurgery at Johns Hopkins Hospital. He was born in Detroit, Michigan, on September 10th, 1951. He attended Yale University, earning a degree in psychology after graduating high school with honors. From Yale, he attended the University of Michigan Medical School, where his interest shifted from psychiatry to neurology. After medical school, he became a neurosurgery resident at the top-ranked Johns Hopkins Hospital in Baltimore. And at the age of 32, he became the hospital's youngest Director of Pediatric Neurosurgery. In 1987, Carson made medical history by being the first surgeon in the world to successfully separate twins conjoined at the back of the head. He was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian award in the United States by President George W. Bush in 2008. Benjamin Carson had a dream. Do you?
Ruby Bridges, born on September 8th, 1954, became the first black elementary school student to attend an all-white school in Louisiana after her parents volunteered her to participate in the integration of the New Orleans School System. Despite the negative actions of people surrounding her, she strived to make a difference. Her courageous actions were the stepping stones to integrating all schools from their own. She is now the Chair of the Ruby Bridges Foundation, which she founded in 1999 to promote the values of respect, tolerance, and appreciation of all differences. Ruby Bridges had a dream. Do you?
Dr. Bernard Anthony Harris Jr. was born on June 26th, 1956, in Temple, Texas. He received a bachelor's degree in biology from the University of Houston. He then attended a national research fellowship at NASA's Amis Research Center in 1987. He later joined NASA's Johnson Space Center as a clinical scientist and flight surgeon. On February 9th, 1995, he became the first African-American to perform an extravehicular activity, also known as a spacewalk. Bernard Anthony Harris had a dream. Do you?
Prince George's County Public Schools, celebrating African-American history.
Thank you for that presentation. Every year during Black History Month, America celebrates the invaluable contributions that African-American community has made to the culture and history of our nation. In celebration of Black History Month, an intergenerational panel representing the 1930s through 1980s will unite to share their individual and collective memories of Lakeland School, one of the first public schools established in Prince George's County for the education of African-American children, as well as their stories of community life during and after segregation. The panel will be facilitated by young adults from around the area. This free discussion will be at Embry AME Church in College Park this Sunday, February 27th, at 3:00 PM. For more information on this event, please visit the school system's website at www.pgcps.org. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Kathleen Sebelis visited Prince George's County Public Schools Judy Hoyer Family Learning Center to observe a high-quality, early childhood learning program in action. During her visit, she toured the school, visiting classrooms and reading to the children. The purpose of the visit was to share HHS's commitments to strengthen Head Start, which we much need in Prince George's County, and increase the quality and affordability of childcare. This visit coincided with the two-year anniversary of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. George Berwick, Head Teacher of Raven Woods School in England, and Anders Halton, Managing Director of School Improvement in Pearson, U.K., visited Adelphi Elementary School on February 12th, 2011, to observe the success of America's Choice Program implemented at that particular school. America's Choice is a comprehensive school reform design that rests on decades of research on best practices in America and throughout the world. The design is aimed at creating coherent, standard-based instructional systems that rest on proven literacy programs and research. Our students, in celebration of Black History Month, Prince George's County Public Schools partnered with the mall at Prince George's in Heiseville, Maryland to display a series of musical performances by students in our school district. Students from Glendale Elementary, Melwood Elementary, and Excel Academy Public Charter School put on an outstanding performance for the visitors. Micah Xavier, a student at Buck Lodge Middle School, was the winner of a $5,000 scholarship from Brainstorm USA. It's an Atlanta-based marketer of educational softwares, videos, workbooks, and computers. The award was presented as part of the company's Dare to Dream, Expect to Exceed scholarship program. Micah dreams of becoming a doctor. For his entry, he created a tent box and wrote an essay. A very moving letter of support from his mother accompanied his entry. His project was chosen from among hundreds of entries. Our teachers, Erin Cribs, a teacher at Crom vocational high school, has been named the Network for Teaching Enterprise Teacher of the Year. Erin will be one of 23 teachers representing individual NFTE programs, offices at the Dare to Dream Awards Gala in New York on April 13th, 2011. Congratulations to you. At this time, Dr. Hyde, I yield to you for your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by saying I am overwhelmed by the support of students, staff, parents, community members, and partners who've demonstrated during these challenging fiscal times. Nearly 300 of you rallied in Annapolis this past Monday to demonstrate to your elected officials that full funding for education is critically important to our students in Prince George's County. I extend a special thanks to members of Prince George's United, which includes representatives from Prince George's County Council of PTSAs, led by Ms. Teresa Saunders, the NAACP, led by Mr. Bob Ross, and the Prince George's Education Association, Mr. Donald Briscoe, President. Also included in the group is Mr. Phil Lee of the Kettering Civic Association and Rhonda Slade of the Prince George's County Chamber of Commerce. These groups work together to organize the rally and pool their resources to provide bus transportation for the event. I would also like to thank everyone who attended the budget public hearings or shared their ideas and/or suggestions online or through email. Your input has been critical, a critical part of the budget development process and will continue to be of great assistance as we reconcile and finalize the budget over the next several months. I want to assure you that we are doing our best to preserve the classroom. We're still working hard to explore all options as we face the possibility of losing programs that have contributed so much to our students' success. And I encourage you to stay involved in the budget process by contacting your elected officials and urging them to fully fund education. Please visit our website for background on the budget and for the latest updates and information. I would also like to thank the nearly 100 students, family members, school system employees, and members of the community who took part in the Gang and Youth Violence Education and Awareness Forum on February 15th at Northwestern High School. More than 100 individuals participated and joined together to learn more about gangs and what is being done to address gang activity. Hosted by Ms. Amber Waller, District 3 Board Member. The event featured seven panelists representing students, the school system, law enforcement, the court systems, and youth services. Thank you to our volunteer panelists and to the representatives from Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, who are on hand to share information on youth services and programs. Congratulations to students in the Career and Technical Education Programs who placed in the Skills USA Maryland Regional Competition on February 8th at Thomas Edison High School of Technology. Three students from Crossland will go on to represent the school system in the state competition from March 25th to the 26th. Afonso Dixon, first place in the Culinary Arts. Miguel Augusta, first place in Masonry. And Rogene Matthews, third place in Computer Repair. Three students from Sutland will also compete and enter net working at the state level. Cornelius Scatamati, first place. Keith Dawson, second place. And Frank Richardson III, third place. We wish all of those students the best of luck and know that they will make us proud. As a reminder, we are partnering with the Prince George's Chamber of Commerce to host this year's Principal for a Day event on April 7th. If you're a business representative and are interested in supporting a school in Prince George's County, we encourage you to take part in this event. Please visit our website at www.pgcps.org backslash Principal for a Day to learn more and register online. Business partnerships are more important than ever before and provide unique enrichment opportunities for students above and beyond their classroom experience. For all of the Prince George's County Public Schools community, please be sure to watch the school system's website for up-to-date information on the FY 2012 Operating Budget. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Hyde. Colleagues, according to the Revised Board Policy 8345, public comment and Board of Education member participation at Board of Education meetings, persons wishing to address the Board regarding an agenda item will be listed on the roster in accordance with that item. We did list on this agenda as an emergency legislative piece that just came to Mr. Lucci. So I would ask if anyone who did not have an opportunity to register to speak on that particular issue, if you do want to speak on that, we will recognize you. Mr. Lucci?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Today and tonight is halftime in the Maryland General Assembly. Forty-five days down, forty-five days to go. There was no musical interlude tonight, but it's kept on slogging through. I want to tell you that the folks that are calling and writing, emailing, and coming to Annapolis about asking for full funding for education for the public school system, you're having a real effect. People are hearing it, people are feeling it, and it is now front and center on people's priorities, our elected officials, to do their best to bring back whatever they can and minimize the cuts that are going to be made here at this level. And so, please continue to do that. One opportunity to do that in person is on March 9th, my wife's birthday has nothing to do with it, but is the hearing on the Equity in Education Funding Act of 2011, House Bill 704, has a hearing March 9th at 1:00 PM before the Senate, excuse me, before the House Ways and Means Committee. And anybody who wants to come down and talk about why it's important for school funding to be continued in Prince George's County, why our programs are so valuable, that would be a good opportunity to do that if you're so inclined. The emergency matter I brought before you tonight is a bill that you've already taken a position on, but the sponsor asked that I bring it back to you for reconsideration because of a proposal that she has. The contract entered into between the school system and the telecommunications company to place towers at various schools in the public school system has the schools listed at the end of the contract, and none of those schools are elementary schools. And so, the proposal from the sponsor of this legislation is, what if the bill was just limited to elementary schools? Wouldn't that interfere with the contract? And what would the Board's position be on that? So I bring that before you because I was asked to, and if the Board wants to take a different position based on that amendment, you're certainly entitled to.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. So colleagues, just to bring us sort of up to speed, we did vote to oppose that piece of legislation. And I guess my question, if I had one, would be to Dr. Hyde in terms of if you then wanted to place such a device on, at one of the elementary school levels. I think most of the research was across the board. It didn't distinguish between elementary, middle, or high schools. What would be your position on that, sir?
Well, that's correct, Madam Chair. We would, while it was not in the contract, the initial contract, it doesn't preclude us from considering elementary school properties in the future. So this would eliminate our ability to place them in an elementary school in the future, although they're not mentioned in the original contract.
Okay. You know, I would just offer my two cents. I'm not necessarily, I understand, I completely understand Delegate Ivy's perspective on this issue. It's hard in the budget time that we're having right now to be able to make that particular decision. And I'm just speaking for myself. Colleagues, does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns? We don't necessarily have to entertain a new motion, but you know, it's there for you if you like. Mr. Armwood, you're trying to buzz in. I see you.
I'd like to move that we restate our opposition to the bill as amended.
Second. So probably move the second that we maintain our opposition to that piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Armwood and Ms. Beck. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any objections? One objection? Two objections? For the record, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Barrows, and Mr. Harris subjects. Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Colleagues, we now yield the floor to Dr. Hyde again for, because we know the budget is the main item of discussion, we reconstructed the agenda- the budget is the main item of discussion, we reconstructed the agenda somewhat, so we want to do the consent agenda items first, Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under budget consent, there are three items, the educational items six point one to six point three, expenditure requirements, High Point High School easement, and appropriation reassortments over one hundred thousand within a major category. And that's for the period of January fourteenth through February tenth.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Move to accept. Thank you, Ms. Beck. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We're probably moving the second that the Board accepts budget consent agenda items six point one through six point three. Ms. Jackson, call or roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Colleagues, I now, you're the floor again to Dr. Height for introduction of consent agenda items seven point zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, under seven point zero, we have five consent agenda items, four of which are proclamations. A proclamation commemorating Prince George's County History Day Competition, proclamation commemorating observations of National Women's History Month, proclamation commemorating NEA's Read Across America Day, proclamation commemorating Irish American Heritage Month. That's in March. And alternative governance option for priority schools, year-one restructuring planning.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, we do have an opportunity to read these proclamations into the record, and so I would ask Ms. Johnson, if you would please read a proclamation acknowledging Prince George's County History Day Competition into the record, please, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution proclamation, Prince George's County History Day Competition, March nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Theme, debate and diplomacy, successes, failures, consequences. Whereas from inception, the purpose of National Maryland and Prince George's History Day, respectively, has been and continues to be an innovative program to help schools invigorate history education in the secondary grades. And whereas each year, more than one-half million students across the United States participate in their local History Day competition, and whereas, in addition to discovering the exciting world of the past, participation in History Day also helps students develop the following attribute, attributes, that are critical for future success, critical thinking and problem-solving skills, research and reading skills, oral and written communication and presentation skills, self-esteem and confidence, a sense of responsibility for and involvement in the democratic process. And whereas History Day makes history come alive for America's youth by engaging them in the discovery of the historic, cultural, and social experiences of the past through hands-on experiences and presentations, today's youth are better able to inform the present and shape the future. And whereas more than five million students have participated in National History Day and have gone on to productive careers in business, law, medicine, and countless other disciplines where they are putting into practice what they learned through the History Day experience. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby recognizes March nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, as Prince George's County History Day in Prince George's County Public Schools. And be it finally resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby calls upon elementary, middle, and high school administrators, educators, students, and citizens of Prince George's County to sustain this event with the support for school programs, ceremonies, and classroom activities. And it is signed Regina M. Jacobs Esquire, Chair, the Board of Education, and William R. Height, Dr. William R. Height, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Boston, would you please read a proclamation acknowledging National Women's History Month into the record?
Yes. Resolution proclamation, National Women's History Month, March twenty-eleven. Our history is our strength. Whereas National Women's History Month provides our country the opportunity and the privilege of honoring the countless contributions that American women have made throughout our history. We recognize that these contributions have enriched our culture, strengthened our nation, and furthered the founders' vision for a free and just republic that provides opportunity and safety at home and is an influence for peace around the world. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. The twenty, two thousand and eight theme for National Women's History Month, Our History is Our Strength, honors the accomplishments of women whose works were acclaimed when created but were written out of history. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, our nation is a land of great opportunity. Women have and are seizing that opportunity and shaping the future of America in all walks of life. American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constit- let's call, constit- constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. This month, we honor the spirit, leadership, hard work, and creativity of American women. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County is proud to recognize the many contributions American women have made to help make our nation free, strong, and a force for peace and justice around the world, as well as in our local communities. On this observance of Women's History Month, we encourage every American to learn more about these important contributions and to celebrate their noble legacies as we work to build a brighter future for our nation and for all of the world's people. And be it finally resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby calls upon all school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Prince George's County to honor this observance with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Regina M. Jacobs Esquire, Chair, Board of Education, William H. Height, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Waller, would you please read Read Across America Day in the record, please?
Proclamation, Read Across America Day, March second, two thousand and eleven. Whereas reading is a gateway skill to learning and is the foundation for future success, Prince George's County Public Schools stands firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Prince George's County Public Schools has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas NEA's Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday, when children of all ages discover the endless opportunities books offer for learning and entertainment and promotes adult involvement in the education of our youth. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby honors Dr. Seuss's one hundred and seventh birthday on March second, two thousand and eleven, as NEA's Read Across America Day in Prince George's County Public Schools. And be it finally resolved, the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby calls upon all school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Prince George's County to honor this observance with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Regina M. Jacobs Esquire, Chair, Board of Education, Dr. William R. Height, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. And for the last one, National Irish American Heritage Month. Ms. Higgins, for some reason, would you please read that into the record?
Yeah, thank you. I'm thrilled. And really, as a person of Irish descent myself, I really am honored to read this proclamation for National Irish American Heritage Month, March of two thousand and eleven. And I would also like to say before I read this proclamation that I was raised that everybody is Irish on St. Patrick's Day, so I hope you will join me. Whereas the histories of the United States and Ireland are deeply entwined, the sons and daughters of Ireland have come to America, have come to America with a spirit of determination and optimism that has strengthened our nation's character and enriched our history. During Irish American Heritage Month, we celebrate Irish Americans and the significant contributions that they have made to our nation. And whereas our founding Irish immigrants have come to America's shores in search of better lives, today millions of American citizens are of Irish descent, and their forebears have helped shape our way of life, strengthened our economy, contributed to the arts, and protected our nation. Irish Americans have shown their devotion to our country by serving in many ways. Nine of the signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish origin, and nineteen presidents of the United States claim Irish heritage, including our first president, George Washington, dancer Michael Flatley, artist Georgia O'Keeffe, film directors Ron Howard and Alfred Hitchcock, Supreme Court Justice Anthony Kennedy, astronaut Michael Collins, and physicist and Nobel Prize laureate Charles Towns, all immigrated from or have family roots in Ireland. And whereas during the month of March, we reflect on our nation's past and how Irish Americans helped create the country we live in, we acknowledge that America is a melting pot of cultures. We also recognize that Irish American Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of Irish American citizens and remind our people how we are blessed to be a nation of immigrants. Whereas today, over thirty-four million United States residents, United States residents claim Irish ancestry, they look back with pride on the achievements and contributions of their forebears to our nation. Throughout their history, Irish Americans have held tightly to their religious faith, their love of family, and their belief in the importance of education. These values have helped the United States to flourish. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby honors Irish Americans for their many contributions to our nation and our culture by recognizing the month of March as National Irish American Heritage Month in Prince George's County schools. And be it finally resolved, the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby calls upon all school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Prince George's County to honor this observance with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed by Regina M. Jacobs Esquire, Chair, Board of Education, William R. Height, Superintendent of Schools. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Dr. Height, as we move into the agenda, I want to, it looks like we should go to, I yield to you for introduction of actually eleven point one, which is the Retirement Incentive Program. It's listed on the agenda as an emergency.
First, Madam Chair, do you want to take action on consent?
Oh, yeah, that would be helpful. Those proclamations were so long, I thought we did that beforehand, but they were good. Okay. Colleagues, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
Move to accept.
Thank you. Ms. Beck. Second. So probably move the second that we accept consent agenda items, which are the proclamations we just read into the record. All in favor? Objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Need a point of clarification, Ms. Johnson?
Right, seven point five, in going through Board Docs and prep for today's meeting, the notation about alternative governance, perhaps I missed it because I would clearly have been asking one question. We are approv-, you know, if we do this in the consent agenda, we are approving this. However, planning from Dr. Height, information more about what type of alternate governance they're going to select or will be selected, will be forthcoming, because clearly we have a high school on this list, and that is far more involved and problematic than an elementary or middle school. So I just want to get clarification as to the timing of this important item.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, I can, I can help with that. There are five schools, and you're right, one high school, Duvall High School is part of the schools that are having to submit an alternative governance plan. And the alternative governance option selected as for FY twelve makes provisions to replace all of the school staff that are relevant to the school's inability to make adequate yearly progress.
Yeah, I read that. Does that, I think I'm out of order about this discussion level because I didn't ask to pull it. Madam Chair, I'm just going to ask that, that as we get through this, that we clearly get some direction from the superintendent about the management of this particular piece because a high school is there and it's, we really, really need to be on task about that.
So note to Ms. Johnson, and I'll make sure that it's included as an update on our next agenda. Okay, colleagues, that brings us to, okay, Dr. Height, am I on target now? Ready for a little?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's start with the Retirement Incentive Program. For the public, this was also offered as a emergency item. Dr. Height first discussed this or brought this to the Board at our last meeting as part of the budget process and looking at ways for saving money, if you will, or at least bringing the system to certain levels. Having said that, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the retirement incentive program? Seeing none, thank you very much, Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, we will actually provide some information about the retirement incentive, and as many of you know, that our school system will implement a new retirement incentive program to help reduce positions while also reducing the need for reductions in force or, and/or layoffs. The school system currently faces an eighty-five million dollar budget gap for FY two thousand and twelve and is looking to close this gap through a wide variety of strategies, including cuts to staffing and cuts to programs. And we hope to mitigate that with a new retirement incentive program. And at this time, we'll have Mr. Stansky walk through just a brief description of the retirement incentive program for us.
Thank you, Dr. Height, Madam Chair, members of the Board, good evening. So what you have before you today is a, like as Dr. Height said, a retirement incentive program for employees who are eligible for normal service retirement. So these are employees who have thirty years of service or have at least five years of service and meet the age requirement for retirement under the Maryland system. So we're talking about roughly over a thousand employees in our system. It will be a completely voluntary program. And again, while, you know, the main goal here is to reduce the number of layoffs and reduction enforces, in the reduction in force that, that would commence unfortunately with this budget. And the way the program is structured is it would be a one-time payment of fifteen thousand dollars to either a cash payout or a, that payment can be put into a TSA retirement account to go along with the leave payout that the employees would automatically be eligible for based on negotiated agreements. We are having some requirements for this that we're asking that the employees request a retirement estimate from the state because the state is so backlogged with processing retirements. They just sent us a letter that says they're about three to four months behind in processing retirement applications. So therefore, we're under a bit of a time crunch, so we're asking that employees who wish to, to apply for this, that they do ask for an estimate from the Maryland State Retirement Agency. The deadline for, for application, if the Board approves tonight, we're looking to get the application out by March first with a deadline of March the twenty-fifth at midnight. We are, the way it would be structured is the approval or denial of the request will be at the discretion of the superintendent or his or her designee. The way we're looking to pay for it is, instead of having to lay off an employee making, let's say fifty thousand dollars, we incentivize somebody to retire. say fifty thousand dollars, we incentivize somebody to retire making a hundred thousand dollars, and that gap between the two salaries would pay for the leave payout and the incentive. Trying to see if there's anything else. The application will be an email application. We will have a website and an email address set up for anyone who has questions. And that's pretty much the structure of it. One other thing is there will be an employee who applies and is accepted will not be allowed to work for the district for eighteen months, except in a role as substitute teacher. They can, they can come back to the district and work as a substitute teacher, however, they cannot come back to work at the district in any other capacity for eighteen months. And that's, that's essentially the structure. I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. Ms. Johnson?
Very quickly, Mr. Stansky, the incentive or the retirement program through incentives, did you have any surveying done to determine the degree of appetite for this kind of programming? I understand why it exists, and many corporations do this at strategic points, but we need to, we have a thousand that are eligible, more or less. What do we need to take the bite of this apple to make it viable, to make it work? How many do we need?
So we know that there's other, so the state of Maryland is offered, is offered an incentive as well as Baltimore City Public Schools. Maryland offered fifteen thousand dollars as well as two hundred dollars for each year of service. They've gotten a fairly good response from their workforce. But looking at our financial situation and looking at the potential leave payouts for these, these thousand employees, we felt that the fifteen thousand dollars we could afford and would still be a good incentive. Just, you know, if the district is on the hook, just in terms of leave payout for the thousand employees, about twenty million dollars if all one thousand were to retire. That's, that would be the required leave payout on top of the fifteen thousand. So again, we will go, you know, through each application, determine if, again, we can prevent, prevent a layoff, and if we can, and we look to see if that gap between the person retiring and the person who would potentially be laid off, that gap in salary will pay for the leave payout and the retirement incentive.
Right, I understand, I understand the format and how it works. What I'm asking you is what is your minimum number to capture that will get you over the hump where you, you break and begin to accrue a positive out of this? So how many of the thousand do you have to have, or do you have to have all one thousand?
I didn't, definitely do not have to have one thousand. We're looking at a number around two hundred right now.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
But, you know, the more, to me, again, the main focus of this is to prevent layoffs. So the more we can afford to prevent layoffs with this program, the, the better, you know, the more applications we'll approve.
And that would be a direct application back into the system for the maintenance of or not laying off or how we proceed? Okay, fine, because people are going to obviously start asking questions, and I just needed to know what is the number you're looking for that says, yeah, we made it? And anything over that is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Waller? Mr. Armwood.
My apologies, I pushed the wrong button again. My question, do you have target numbers per at-risk job classification? And what I'm asking is if you have a food service, or if you have a teacher that's at risk and you're lumping in that calculation, food service worker, the salaries do not match. So how are you going to match the retiring person?
Right, so, so that's why we keep, we're keeping it open-ended. So, you know, we're going to look at job classifications with large reductions, where we, we're going to probably see potential layoffs. And we will, you know, we'll really look at those classifications to, to see where, hopefully, we get applications to prevent some of those. But, yeah, we wouldn't exchange a food service worker, the math wouldn't work on your example.
So this offer is only for at-risk job?
It's, it's for everybody eligible to retire, but we're, you know, that's why we're going to review application by application.
If I, can I add? The position classification of the retiree is less important. The important thing for the retiree is the salary. For the person who we're saving, then we really look at position classification where we're reducing and making sure that that higher salary monetarily covers the lower salary, whatever the position classification, the leave payout, and the incentive for the retiree. So it might not necessarily be a one-for-one, we're not going to accept a teacher and then reduce our layoffs by one teacher. We could take a higher salary from another position classification and still save a teacher because that's where we're reducing, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Boston?
On the leave payout, is there a formula on how much leave that an employee can take when they retire, or are, are we offering that they can take?
So it, it really does depend on the contract. So each contract is different. I, off the top of my head, I, I usually use three tenths of your sick leave, up to a hundred days maximum. That's usually in the ballpark of all our different contracts, but I would have to get back to you in writing specifically what each contract states because it is different, a little different for each contract.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. And I just had one, so when they make their application to the state, the actual percentages are determined by the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and, and we'll be telling employees, if you pass this resolution tonight, we'll get the resolution out to them tomorrow with a reminder how to file for that estimate directly with the state. It's called Form nine, that's what they need to file. And then the application for the incentive program, that will all go out by March first so that we can make sure everything's up on the website and ready to go. And that application for the incentive will come to us. So they're doing Form nine for the estimate with the state, then they're going to do the incentive program for us, and then if that's approved and they're going to go through with the retirement, then they finish out that process with the state.
And then what was the determination of eighteen months? I mean, was that just, was there, was it arbitrary or?
We borrowed it from other programs that we looked at, and that seemed to be about on par with the other programs.
Okay. All right. Call it, Dr. Height, you have anything else to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Beck?
Move to accept. Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for retirement incentive program. Any further discussion? Sing none. Ms. Jackson, call the board, please.
On the motion, Ms. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. U. Banks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Dr. Height, that brings us to eleven point three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that is the adoption of the FY twenty-twelve annual operating budget. We do have a short presentation that we will share with the board this time. You have public comment?
That's correct. I do have a list for public comment. You turn the lights back on, my apologies. Okay. Colleagues, we do have registered speakers for this agenda item. Notice to our registered speakers that you have three minutes. You must speak on the item for which you registered. We ask that you use titles instead of names. At the end of your, at the conclusion of your statement, the buzzer will go, well, at the conclusion of three minutes, the buzzer will go off. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to anyone other than yourself and your adherence to these guidelines will ensure that public comment is smooth. The first person on the list for adoption of the FY twelve operating budget is Tanya Bryan. Okay. The next person, although I think I got an email from her, is Elaine Bonner Tompkins here? Oh, okay. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Bonner Tompkins, and I'm offering testimony this evening on behalf of the Robert Goddard Montessori School, PTSA, as their advocacy committee chair. We are a community of more than five hundred students, teachers, and family members who represent a diversity of backgrounds, but a common commitment to our children. On behalf of the PTSA, several other parents and I attended Saturday's budget work session. We appreciate the concerns that each of you raised about the superintendent's budget and know that none of you are in an enviable position to have to endorse a budget that will cut programs that impact the future of our county's children and families. Nevertheless, we ask that you consider closely the potential implications of diminishing transportation for specialty programs and seek other alternatives for potential cost savings. Both transportation alternatives mentioned on Saturday, the hub option and the fee-for-service option, will inherently increase student turnover at each of the specialty programs and undermine their quality. Many, if not most, special program parents will either have to curtail their work hours to transport children, hire someone else to do it, or undertake an additional expense that they cannot afford. Other families will decide that they have had enough of the school system unfairly targeting its best programs and brightest children, and will simply leave the school system, which is a loss for the county. And as was shared by Board Member Beck on Saturday and one of our parents via email, encouraging more parents to drop, to do drop-offs at our campus, at our campus in the John Hanson complex could create twice daily traffic jams that will prevent schools from starting on time and create further havoc. We hope that the board will continue to direct the superintendent to consider other options for proposed savings. And if either of these approaches is pursued, that the board will collectively direct the school system to work closely with impacted families to minimize the drawbacks associated with the potential change in transportation and to be as transparent as possible. I would also like to ask that you consider whether the proposal to curtail specialty program transportation undermines the free public education that all Maryland students have a right to under state law. As Board Member Armstrong indicated on Saturday, transportation should be considered a cost of doing business for the school system. And if a majority of the members of the Prince George's County State Delegation agree with this perspective, they could lead the charge for the state to enact a law preventing this county from charging for bus service, similar to the law forwarded by the Montgomery County State Delegation in the mid nineteen nineties and enacted since then that prevents their school system from charging for bus service. We know that these are difficult times, and we wish you each the best with the difficult...
Thank you. Deidra Dick?
Good evening. I'm a parent, and I have an eight-year-old in the PG County School System, and I wanted to raise a concern of mine. Number one, we all know that motivation is something you can't create. A person has to have that. We can all cite a teacher who motivated us. We can call her by name, we can, we know what she smiled like, we know her reprimand, we know, we have that vision of that teacher that inspired us. Well, what happens when you're in an environment of uninspired teachers? You get an environment of uninspired students. So I would really like to focus your attention on research by Larry Fraz. He put together about five factors that I like to pull from his research that identified factors that create an unmotivated teacher. Working conditions such as class size, discipline conditions, availability of teaching materials, the quality of a principal's supervision, basic psychological needs such as money, status, and security. Well, unfortunately, I've experienced an unmotivated teacher, and my seven-year-old was the, sort of the, received the, the outcome of unmotivated teacher. And so I really think in terms of cutting budget, we have to figure out a way to put resources where we can motivate and excite teachers about teaching. Because at the end of the day, it's really about inspiring our students, and if the teachers are uninspired, unmotivated, we certainly cannot look for a positive outcome with our students. And I just wanted to cite an incident where a teacher wrote my seven-year-old's reading log book, "You Think You Know, But You Don't." What kind of an educator would say that to a seven-year-old? I took this to the principal. She didn't see anything wrong with it. What kind of environment says that that's acceptable language to a seven-year-old? I believe that's an unmotivated environment, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention to think about what we can do to motivate our teachers so that they can do what I believe they love, and that is to teach. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kahn? Co-chair, Citizens for an Elected Board.
Thank you. Every year, I speak at this meeting and congratulate you on the job that you have done so far and will continue to do with the budget, even where I disagree with you. It's a very thankless task, no matter what you do, one group or another, or people are going to disagree with you. So keep up the good work. Having said that, I want to associate myself with the remarks of the next to the last speaker before, two speakers back from me regarding transportation for specialty programs. I think it's an equity issue as much as anything else. It means that people who can't afford the transportation are not going to be able to take advantage of our specialty programs. Beyond that, and it's too late now probably for your vote tonight, but we know this isn't the end of the budget process, not by a long shot, and there may well be further cuts that you have to make. What I'd like to ask the board to do is to direct the superintendent between now and the time we get this budget back, to cost out the savings that could be made by eliminating the high school consortium, and provide that information to the board as a possible place to cut a lot of money if such further cuts are needed. And beyond that, I wish you continued good luck with the budget, and maybe you won't get further cuts. We can all dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Dr. Height, that concludes public comment on the adoption of the FY two thousand twelve operating budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we will walk through a brief presentation this evening just to introduce, to reintroduce this to the board. Tonight's area of focus will be the revenue sources and just a reminder of where our funds come from. We also want to display how we allocate those resources and provide for the board and the public updates around some of the adjustments that have been made since this budget was first proposed. And we have made updates in ROTC, Evening High School, Read and Recovery, Media Specialist, and Class Size. I will also add that we are looking at the transportation, particularly for our specialty centers, and we're working through a plan based on a fee-based system. But I do want to acknowledge here that any plan, any fee-based plan for transportation will exclude families who are eligible for farms. And so that's how we're building in the fee-based system. We unfortunately do not have that ready for this evening, but as we work from now to the process to reconcile the budget, we hope to have that information available. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Stansky to walk us through the next couple of slides, beginning with revenue sources.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Good evening, board members, once again. First slide again, we're going to talk about is revenue sources. So our proposal to the board tonight is a budget of one point six zero four billion dollars. And just to, you know, give a little context, in fiscal year two thousand and eight, which was just four short years ago, that number was one point six eight billion dollars. So just, you know, I know I've, I've shown the chart before to, to the board and to the public, but just again, to reiterate that, that's the, that's the type of just straight revenue decline that the district has seen over the last four years. As you can see, nearly, list over half of our money right now is coming from the state of Maryland. 11% from the federal government, 37% from the county, and 1% from board sources. The board and county actually are required by law to approve the budget based on these functional totals. This gives you a breakdown of where the functions were, where they are currently for fiscal year 11, what we proposed in December, and what is being proposed for the board to vote on this evening. I will just like to point out that the administrative function is just now barely 3% of our total operating budget and has been declining for the last four years. So I again want to reiterate that we've worked really hard to reduce in the area of administration and to try again to keep cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. Just to give you some updates of, from our initial revised proposal in February to where we are now. We had initially proposed to cut the JROTC program in half. What we have for the board again tonight is a different structure that keeps JROTC at every high school, but relatively reduces the FTE count in each high school by two. And except for Oxon Hill, given the enrollment, there's a reduction of one FTE. So again, every high school will still have the JROTC program. It's just, there may not be as many course offerings as we were able to provide before. So it still saves the district money, but again, still able to offer the program to any each high school. There was again, an initial proposal to restructure Evening High School. We feel like the structure we've put in place now, which would be to continue the programming at the northern part, in Northwestern High School and the southern part of the county at Crossland, reducing the administrative staffing of those schools and increasing the tuition that students would pay. Again, saves the district funds while still offering a comprehensive program for those students. We've had again, a reduction in Reading Recovery. Just to get you some history, two years ago, a cut in Reading Recovery was proposed. And then the federal government came in with stimulus money. We were able to restore the 28 FTE with special education stimulus money. As the board and public are well aware, that stimulus money is expiring. So those 28 FTE will be reduced. And there's also a proposal to reduce in addition the remainder 50 FTE out of the general fund. However, we will be receiving a letter from the state which states that we will be able to use Title I funding to fund this program. So that will be an option for principals in Title I schools to fund this program using their Title I dollars. As Dr. Height alluded to earlier, right now, the recommendation still is elimination of specialty transportation for lottery and tested schools and programs. But we are working through a fee-based structure right now so we can offer transportation to these students based on fees. As Dr. Height alluded to, farm students will be waived from those fees. I can talk to you, the billing structure would work similarly to what we use for before and aftercare right now, which is PayPams. So it would require a credit card, go online and actually pay with a credit card. You can pay in monthly installments or you can pay in one installment. Reports can be run that match, for transportation, that match students who are to pay. And if they have paid or have not paid, so we have an internal control structure already in place with our PayPam program with before and aftercare. And as I said, we are working through the fee structure right now. And we will, of course, once that is finalized internally, we'll present that to the board for a recommendation. Discussion around Media Specialist, there's still a reduction of 92. The way the remaining 92 will be allotted is through a formula. So right now, obviously, in this fiscal year, every, every school gets a full-time media specialist. In this new formula, schools with enrollment under 250 will get a media specialist two days a week. Schools with 251 to 500 get one three days a week. Schools 500 to 1,000 will split halftime between media specialists. And then all high schools and schools with over 1,000 students enrolled will get a full-time media specialist. Final is class size. So what you'll see in this chart is what the current class size ratio, how we staff for fiscal year 11, and the changes. So kindergarten will be held constant. We are proposing a one per student increase in grades one and two, holding grade three constant. Grades four and six, we'll see a one student increase as well as high school. And we'll go to the next slide for middle schools because middle schools are always staffed a little differently. They're staffed in bands of students. And we are now going to go to what most districts go to, which is a straight formula for middle schools. And that middle school formula will be a 22 to 1 ratio, which will then staff both the core classes and electives for middle schools. With that, that concludes the presentation. As I said, the budget's around $1.64 billion. You have a board action summary in front of you that outlines how that money is broken down by function and a total FTE count of 16,900. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. Ms. Beck?
A lot of this gives me heartburn, a lot of it. And I remain concerned about the transportation issue. Not just for an equity aspect of it, but I, I can actually see parents lining up on Good Luck Road in their cars first day of school and not being able to drop their child off for a good hour because of the amount of traffic that there would be. I don't think all families will be able to pick up the fee base. I know we have four children in our family, and I don't know if you're proposing fee-based by child or fee-based by bus stop. If it was the cost of the bus trip, $1,900, then most certainly our family couldn't have afforded that times four, no matter what PayPal system, PayPam system we have in place. And certainly, we wouldn't qualify for farms. We just couldn't have sent all four children in that scenario. I'd like to hear more about the strategies of families opting for a fee base and then opting for transportation and what we're going to do with a lot of our schools that do not provide the access routes to allow for this. And I've used Goddard in my discussion points before because it has the one entrance and the one exit. And we have buses parked there. We don't have enough parking for staff. I just don't see how that facility is going to handle this recommendation. Should I do my number two? The middle school reduction that we just saw going to a 22 to 1, I would like to see what that looks like by school in terms of what they have now and what they would have using this new revised formula. I, I agree with the formula at first look, but if a school is going to be losing an enormous number of staff, I think that's where you get into the devil's ear in the details.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway Beck. On the, on the first question with respect to Goddard, and we had a, one of our staff members out yesterday with traffic with Prince George's County Police Department. And they have conducted an analysis in the writing report on recommendations for how we could have ingress and egress with the number of cars that we would anticipate if parents dropped the students off. That is not available this evening. And, but the plan came back that if in fact, there was a staggered time, and I don't want to talk too much without all of the details, if there was a staggered, staggered, staggered time for the two schools and a staggered time for dismissal, it would mitigate greatly the amount of traffic that's lining up to go to the school. So they are going to write a report, and we will have that report and we'll share it with the board. And that will be a part of any recommendation that we have for the fee-based structure. With respect to the middle school, the middle school staffing ratio. And I think we have looked at that actually by school. And Dr. Aubergas has some information on that. And he can share that with us at this time.
Would you like me to send you the spreadsheet of the impact of every school? Is that what it works, do you want that right now?
Can you just give me a general idea of some of the surprising ones? I know some schools would be more impacted, but give me an example.
The Benjamin Stoddard, because we do a band, where you are in that band depends. So Benjamin Stoddard would actually have no impact on their staffing. But the schools, the K to 8 schools that have staffing below 400 would be the most impacted. And that would be John Hansen Montessori and John Hansen French Immersion. That's where the largest, that's where the richest staffing is from a straight ratio. Robert Goddard is also pretty rich staffing. Most schools would lose between one and two teachers.
Can, can we go back on the fee base? And whether it's per child, per ride, per, what's the, and the sliding scale aspect that had been discussed?
We were looking at that as a graduated scale, Ms. Hathaway Beck. So we're looking at it as a graduated scale, which means that if you, child one would cost something. If there's a second child, then it is a significantly reduced amount. And then children after that, even more significantly reduced amount. And so that's what we're talking about in terms of a graduated scale. But we're working all of those things out, trying to do an actualization on what it would mean in terms of the fees for these families. But we would not, if you have four children, it would not be likely that we would be charging $1,900 for all four children. It would start, and this is very much how private schools implement this, this fee-based structure. But it would be a scale for the first child and then a reduced amount, or maybe not even amount, depending on the number of children who are attending for all subsequent children who attend.
One of the speakers mentioned that Montgomery County prohibits from charging for bus service. Is that?
So it's, it's actually in state law that is specific to Montgomery County, that Montgomery County is not allowed to charge for transportation. However, there is a bill in their delegation to, to remove that law.
I'm done for now.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Ms. Johnson?
Thanks. One, Dr. Height, I would like to recommend that for the two Evening High Schools, rather than Crossland, I would like to recommend Henry Wise. I'm thinking about the fact that Largo is coming out of one, you know, will be one of the three that'll be eliminated. Henry Wise is southeast enough that I think it would pick up. Of course, I don't know why you kept it at Crossland, if there is a real reason. But I believe that the pickup of young people, if it is moved to Wise, you cut the distance. And I, and I think you may find that those young people who don't go to Largo by going down 202 and going out Brown Station Road very quickly, they're there. Those young people who are going to Crossland coming up, and you know, Allentown Road. So I kind of think for location purposes, Crossland may be, Wise might be your best bet. But again, I leave that to you. With regard to transportation, Comar is pretty clear. When young people are moved from one school to another for desegregation purposes or something that the system does systemically, we clearly have to provide transportation. There is no ruling in Comar that requires specialty schools. There is none. They are done because they have value, because they are good to do. When Prince George's County implemented Tag Magnet schools for desegregation purposes about 30-plus years ago, we also, in the system, included transportation. We had to do that because we were forcing children in and out of different schools. We then morphed that into expanding and building specialty programs. The problem was, the members who sat at this table did not, and the superintendent did not do strategic planning to make sure it was sustainable. It is bothering me that here, we clearly are going to impact families. But the reality is, the transportation is decimating us financially. In order to do that, we would have to cut so much other stuff for the majority of the children. I don't like it. And so I say to you, as we look at this, combination fee, combination transporting, combination of retransport, I don't have a definitive answer. But everybody has got to give. There is no question, we all have to give up something. You put your children in specialty programs, wonderful. But I will tell you, it has to be sustainable. It's not going to win friends and influence, you know? I understand, people are going to be mad as heck at me. But I am saying, I am not going to cut the life out of this system for books and transportation for other children for certain thousand of children who are wonderfully in programs that we never built a sustainable system in for transportation. Let's come together, let's figure out a way. But I have to tell you, Dr. Height, I am not going to vote to gut this system for this, for the main reason we're here, and that is to educate our children in our regular core Maryland curriculum. We all will work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Height, thank you and your staff for this very hard work. I know you've been working on this for quite a while. At first, I was in the audience and I spoke with a member of, from a school, a student at a school, and she had concerns about losing her translator, parent translator at her school. Is that, is that an issue? I just want to address that for her while she's here.
We don't have, we, we still have translators and none are reduced, Mr. Burrows. So if there's a translator this year in the budget, there likely will be one next year. We didn't, we didn't address that office in, in these budget cuts.
Thank you. And also, I just wanted to say, specialty programs is something that, those programs make our system great. It's not the only thing that makes our system great, but it's absolutely something that, that adds value to this, to our system. And I would not vote for any measure to limit that. Secondly, I think, I believe that the site at Crossland is fair. I think it's, you know, I have the map right here. And I would strongly consider, strongly urge you to stay with your recommendation to keep Crossland Evening High School open. And also, I wanted some more clarity on the specialty school transportation. My fear is, is that if we take transportation away, it'll be a deterrent from eighth graders, seventh graders, their parents from even putting their children into the specialty programs. And then the enrollment will decline, and then we'll lose money and lose students and that sort of way. Can you please address that? I know you said farm students wouldn't be affected. But I think Ms. Beck's example is valid. And I would hate to, to vote for a budget that would, in essence, dismantle the program.
And as you know, Mr. Burrows, we had what amounted to 47 cuts of either programs or resources or services in this budget proposal. And it's not, unfortunately, it impacts everybody across our system. It impacts a wide range of individuals. And we know that many of these are painful for our parents and our students and our schools. But I, but we don't have, we're still working to...
But I, but we don't have, we're still working to try to resolve it as best we can. And resolve it by coming up with alternatives that still provide the service in some form or fashion. We were looking at two options. The first option of a hub was just not feasible. It was not feasible because it was unsupervised, it would be in places that were unsupervised. So we're still working through the details of trying to implement a fee-based structure based on where every student lives, who is associated or attending a lottery or test in school today. We do not have that information available, other than just to say that we are looking at that fee-based structure. We're looking at a graduated approach. We're looking at how we could collect those. And we're also analyzing traffic patterns in and out of schools in the event that more parents would choose to bring, or, or take, transport their students to schools. So I don't have the details of, of the plan, but we are just trying to mitigate as best we can. We're also, as indicated earlier about one of, one of the individuals in public comment, we're also hopeful for more money.
Right.
But unfortunately, we could be in a situation where we have to make more cuts. So it's also a tenuous position to be in, trying to present a budget based on the statutory requirements and not having all of the information with respective details. But we will work day and night to provide those details for not just the specialty center transportation, but for the other forty-six things that were eliminated as well.
And when you come up with your recommendation for the specialty school plan, I would appreciate if you were to send that to the PTSAs of all the specialty schools. I would be very interested in their feedback in, in the matter. Secondly, a program that's very important to me, a program that eighty percent of the students exit reading on or above grade level, reading recovery was among the budget to be cut. And can you explain the, the Title I and how might that affect the program and how we can save the program?
The, the reading recovery program, as you know, is a program that has been, that has proven successful with the students. As you indicated, Mr. Burrows, eighty percent of the students actually begin reading on grade level who have participated in a reading recovery program. It's a group of highly trained individuals, based on the reading recovery model. We made a request, and one of the things that we were able to use several years ago with stimulus money was money that came through stimulus with respect to special education to continue reading recovery, to continue employing twenty-eight reading recovery teachers. I have made a request to the state that since we are proposing the elimination of all reading recovery, if we could use Title I as a vehicle to support reading recovery moving forward. And the state has responded that, yes, that would be an appropriate use of Title I funds. And so now we would determine how we would do that in, and around the Title I schools.
Okay. And is there any, so from, from the emails that I've written, from the reading recovery teachers who I had the opportunity to speak to, there is no obligation on the principal's point of view that he or she would have to implement reading recovery as optional? Which means that if principals decided not to support the program, the program would essentially be eliminated?
Yes, in that, in that scenario, yes, that is correct. And we are also, we're also determining whether or not we will provide reading recovery as a required program option. The only problem with that is, as soon as we do that using Title I funds, if other schools choose to use reading recovery out of their school operating funds, it becomes a supplanting issue, which means that we could only then offer it in the Title I schools. So we're trying to look at how we could provide it as an option for Title I. And then others will also have the option to employ that strategy inside of their schools. But if we require it of all Title I schools, then it essentially eliminates it as an option at all other schools.
Also, in your original budget, you had three for a lo-
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, sir. I have Ms. Boston.
I too want to say how grateful we are of all the time that your staff spent. I know it's, you know, we've all been communicating back and forth through emails and a lot of questions. And I know some of our questions may be repetitive, but we're just trying to get, get answers to, to some of these things that are giving us heartburn, as my colleagues have mentioned. When you mentioned the transportation on this sliding scale, I, have you come, is there going to be a cap? Like, are you setting a cap on how much that we would charge, regardless of how much a person make? And then the scale goes down according to their income? Because, say, I'm just throwing out a, a figure, say, we're charging a person that makes a real high income, two hundred dollars, but then person is making maybe a real low income, but they're not farms. We wouldn't charge them the same amount. So I just want to know, is that the kind of scale you're talking about when you're talking about your sliding scale?
That's, yes, to both of those. So to both of those. We're talking about a sliding scale based on the number of students. We're talking about a scale based on distance, because, I mean, it could be the miles travel and with respect to income in the house. But, but we would have to, that's one of the reasons we don't have the information, is because we're trying to capture all of that information on all of the students who are attending those programs. And so ability to pay would be a part of the sliding scale, to answer your question. Yes.
I noticed that you did not put, last Saturday when we, we met, middle school athletics was brought up. And I noticed on this presentation that you did not include this. And I think one of the discussions that we talked about was charging a, the fifty dollars, I think, fee for students. And I, you know, I just don't want to pass a budget that has middle school athletics as being taken out of middle schools altogether, and not have, having that part in there about the fee so we can retain middle school athletics.
It is our desire, Ms. Boston, to retain middle school athletics. We're also in conversations, not just with, just about the fee, because quite frankly, the fifty-dollar fee doesn't cover the cost of the middle school athletics. However, we've also been in conversation with Park and Planning. And Park and Planning has given an indication to, they've shown an interest in helping us with a program that's not interscholastic, if you will. So you have students who participate inside of the school. And Park and Planning could help us with that, but we're still in those conversations. We did talk about a fee for middle school athletics. But a fee of fifty dollars per sport in middle school athletics, based on the number of students who are participating, would not cover the fee, the amount of the elimination for middle school athletics.
So then, if I'm hearing you right, then in your, in the budget, if we, you know, that we vote on tonight, it's the elimination of the middle school athletics?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I have one more question. How would the, you know, the retirement program, incentive program that, that you just offered? Now, and I, if I understood you correctly, you're trying, you're going to, you're going to pretty much make the decisions, like if you, your teachers, or the, how, how you're going to do the retirement thing? So if, say, if we get the number of retirement for the teachers that you're anticipating, would that kind of eliminate the classroom increase? Because basically, if you're talking about classroom teachers, you know, is this going to eliminate having to increase this class size and an elimination of these teachers?
No, it will save jobs, it will save layoffs. But the same number of FTEs will be built in, that's built in for the class size increase. So that's the number that we have to get to, to realize the overall savings.
So, Ms. Boston?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, so instead of having to lay off two hundred and fifty people, we get two hundred and fifty people to retire. So you still have to have the class size increase. So it's how do those FTEs leave the district? You know, without a retirement incentive, more than likely, they're leaving the district through a reduction in force. With a retirement incentive, hopefully, those, the folks who are leaving the district are folks retiring. But this class size increase would still be there.
But in either scenario, we would lose two hundred and fifty people, teachers.
So we don't have any recommendations to, right now, on the books to eliminate losing teachers, per se? Is that what you're telling me?
No, we do not. And the, one of the things I shared on Saturday is if, you know, we have a request for twenty million dollars in additional funding. And it was in my proposal to target those funds for class size. Of course, the board could make a recommendation to target those for something else. But that would be, that was my proposal. If we were fortunate enough to receive any additional monies, I wanted to target that to offset class size increases.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, well, first I'll start with, I want to make a statement about our pre-K program. And recognizing the fact that, I believe that our pre-K program prepares our students for success in school. And I've read that they score higher in school readiness tests, they have better social skills, and fewer behavioral problems once they enter school. Children with high-quality early learning experiences are less likely to be held back. The children from low-income families who participate in high-quality early childhood education programs show the most benefits, they repeat fewer grades and learn at higher levels. And I wanted to just make a, a statement with my concern about pre-K and kindergarten. And it would be throughout all of Prince George's County, but in particular, in the district and area that I represent, we have a lot of diversity. We have a lot of families that English is not the main language that is spoken. And I'm, I hope that we can find some way that we can reach out to all of our families to ensure that pre-K remains an option for them, the students, to be exposed and to be engaged. You have a business advisory committee, and it was one of the questions that came up, and it was established about a year ago. And it was to identify mutually business partners to assist. My question with this, is this organization, are they working with anyone in the school system? Are they, are, the organization, they, are they, is their function overlapping with what some of our employees are charged to do with bringing in business partners? And are they in a position to help us find a way to continue to engage pre-K in our kindergarten programs?
Yeah, Ms. Waller, in fact, when, at our last business advisory, they were just as upset about all of the proposed cuts in the budget as all of you. And looking for ways to assist, both with defining new business partners, and also with efforts to advocate on behalf from the businesses in Annapolis. And as a matter of fact, somewhere in Annapolis on Monday night with, with, with other members of our citizens who, who went from Prince George's County down to Annapolis. But, so they are engaged in the process, looking for ways. It is a nine-million-dollar price tag to move pre-K to, to full, back to full day. And that's a pretty significant price tag, even for a business advisory committee. So unfortunately, there were no offers to provide nine million dollars to us for the purpose of that. But they have and will continue to advocate for us in Annapolis and are communicating with their workers how they can become involved as well, in support of the school system.
And what about the Prince George's Education Foundation? Can you speak to what they do? And I believe that you all had, we had a fundraiser. How do their, how do they help the school system? What is their function? I know, this is, it's probably sound unusual, but-
Yes, right now, right now, we do have an education foundation, Ms. Waller. It is non-operating, it's just a place where money for fundraising go, is housed. And it's a part of the broader Prince George's Community Foundation. And it houses a lot of the grants that we receive. Like the Gates Grant is, is housed there, the Susan Michael Dell Grant, they're there. Anyone who wants to donate to the system can make a donation through the Ed Foundation. This year, we were fortunate enough, as a part of the United Way campaign, to, to have or acknowledge the Ed Foundation as a contribution. And we've had contributions there. A lot of the monies inside of that foundation will pay for needy school, needing, needy student scholarships, if you will, will help offset the cost of some college applications for many of our students. And then most of the other monies are targeted as a direct cost, that, something associated with a grant. But that's the, that's what the Ed Foundation, that's the purpose and the role that it serves now.
And I, we hear about the High School Consortium. And the CTE program is going to be moved underneath the High School Consortium. And what are the plans underway for CTE? I noticed that at, we have more classes at some schools than we do at others. And I was just wondering, are you, is there going to be a reorganization of what's going on with CTE?
We have, we actually have a lot of students who are enrolled in CTE classes. And with respect to the High School Consortium, I want to come back to that. The High School Consortium, as it was designed three years ago, is essentially eliminated. So it's no longer that structure. Career and technical education will then go back under curriculum and instruction. And many of the individuals who were from curriculum and instruction before will go back to curriculum and instruction because it really deals more with content. Inside of our secondary school reform, we are looking at expanding CTE offerings and making sure that any student who is, who is going through the program completer status in a CTE course is also sitting for a certifying exam. In other words, we want of the sixteen thousand students who are enrolled in some form of career and technical education, we want them to finish with something that they can use in industry or in college.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Height, first, just want to say thank you for the things that you have put back in the budget. The ROTC, thank you. And Evening High School, making sure that we are going to have at least two locations in Norfolk and South, thank you. But I do have one concern about that. I just want to, and it's been the same concern about the online classes. Again, the students still are not convinced that that's going to be the, the best option for the students. And I'm still not convinced either. Ms. Johnson did make a point about maybe using Wise High School. I don't know too much about that. I think we do, actually, I think it needs to be further down south, further than Crossland, to catch a little bit more students. And also, just making sure that there is trans, public transportation, because a lot, a lot of our students do use the mass transit to get to our Evening High School. Now that we're talking about transportation, I have a lot of concerns. You know that I've been a big proponent about talking about how we can reduce that four hundred million dollars that we spend on our busing system every year. But with that being said, I know, I know a lot of students that want to- But with that being said, I know, I know a lot of students that went to, I know a lot of students that went to Thomas Pullen, that now go to St. Louis High School. The students that are in the science and tech programs, and I talked to them about transportation. And they told, simply told me they could not do it. With, even the hub system, you still have to drive to a certain location, then being dropped back off there. You have to remember, there's, there are still a lot of parts of our county that do not have the, a public transportation system that works effectively and efficiently. So that, that is a big concern that I have with middle schools. We know that they're struggling. And I remember when you first said, you were talking about, you know, increasing class size, and you said it was going to be strategic. And I really believe our middle schools can't be touched anymore. It's, it's the prime, it's the prime opportunity where students are changing, making the transition in their lives, making the transition in the academics, transitioning in the maturity of their bodies, different things like that. And now, increasing class sizes, even by one or two teachers a school, what is the effect that's going to have on them? My question about reading recovery is, now that we're taking it out, what are we going to replace it with? What are we going to do to catch those students that, that we, what are we, what are we going to do to still help those same students that the reading recovery program helped? And now, and now we'll be talking about, a constituent talked about motivating teachers, which is something I touched up on the, at the last board meeting. And you, and you always put that motivating, one of the ways we motivate our teachers is that National Board Certified Stipend. First, I want to know, is the National Board Certified, Nationally Board Certified Stipend still in the budget?
I want to answer all your other questions, too, Mr. Harris.
I have a follow-up to that one.
Oh, you have a follow-up to that? The national, that's, we have stipends in the budget. So we have a $500,000 stipend that could be used as the board directs it. But that also is a subject of negotiations with the PGCEA and any of the other, any of the other unions in terms of how do we use stipends.
I just would like to say, we're in a tough budget. And I've talked to teachers, and they are, every single teacher I've talked to have said, you know, I can do another year without, you know, a step increase. I can do another year without this. I can do another year without stipends. Let's take that money. Let's put it somewhere else. Ms. Boston has talked about middle school athletics, and yesterday, we were at the county championships. And you saw how hard the boys and girls teams, they fought it out, doing something, the student athletes doing what they loved. And I, and I was thinking to myself, when I was watching the game, a lot of those students came from the middle school programs that were in our schools, the basketball programs that are in the schools. Are we still going to be able to keep that same level of talent? A lot of time, when I think about middle school athletics being cut, I also think about this in the same light. The, a direct correlation would be that $8 million that we got last, that we receive, well, we didn't receive it, but the $8 million of scholarship money that we had last year. I know some of that came from our student athletes. Are we going to see that reduced? So I really believe we can, we really can't afford stipends this year. You know, taking away stipends may save a couple of reading recovery teachers. It may save, you know, a couple of, of buses to transport, middle, transport to specialty school programs. And it may, maybe even be able to save a couple of teachers for our classrooms. So I really believe we need, we need to look at stipends and take it out the budget.
Okay, Mr. Harris, I'm going to try to work back from the stipends and the emoluments. I'm going to, I'm going to start with the, the original question. And I, I think you started with reading recovery. Was that the first question? Okay, reading recovery. So I'm not, actually, I have Mr., I mean, Dr. Arbogast, talk about how we would address reading at those schools that would lose reading recovery.
There's no doubt that losing reading recovery would be a severe loss. But also know that about half our schools do not have reading recovery right now. And we do have, well, it's about half that doesn't have it and about half that do. The, it's still going to be a difficult for us to do this. We do have intervention programs, and one of the things that makes reading recovery most successful is if the student leaves reading recovery into effective instruction, those kids maintain and sustain that growth. So the key there is effective instruction. So we have to make sure that our first and second grade teachers are delivering the curriculum with fidelity and with a diagnostic, prescriptive approach that is the hallmark of reading recovery.
Thank you. And then you also mentioned, Mr. Harris, transportation and the, I agree. We have families and we have places where there's no access to public transportation. And that's why this recommendation is so tough for us. As you know, we still, we, we do provide transportation, however, to boundary schools. But by the same token, we just can no longer afford inside of this budget to provide it to schools that are outside of the boundary. And we have to find ways to, to do that, or at least offset the costs. With respect to the stipends, the, as I indicated before, there's $500,000 for stipends that would have to be negotiated with all four of our labor partners. It is not, they're, they're no longer identified for the purpose of just National Board Certified. I also want to add that all of the coaching, all of the individuals who coach, individuals who sponsor yearbook, and many of the adults that you saw yesterday at the championship are still paid emoluments. And those emoluments are for the purpose of working with children as a coach or as a sponsor. And so we still have those things. With respect to the middle schools, yes, that is a concern. We are looking at how we can have students participate in some sort of activity that may not be as cost prohibitive as an inter-scholastic program at the middle school. We are trying, as I indicated before, to work with Maryland National Park and planning to come up with a way to do that. And the final thing is that we do not have steps or colers in the budget. So paying a step or cola increase is not in the budget. And I think you mentioned at the beginning, $400 million for transportation. I think it's more, I think it's closer to $89 million that we spend on transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. In regards to transportation, how much of that $89 million is spent on non-public transportation?
Can you go to the next question, and we'll make sure I can look and, and I'll get the exact figure for you.
Okay. And when you answer, I guess, why not define what non-public transportation is for the public who might not know? Camp Schmidt is not mentioned in, in your presentation tonight. Is Camp Schmidt still to be cut, or had, do we have alternatives?
We, we are working on alternatives, Mr. Armwood. As it stands tonight, the, the Camp Schmidt is proposed to be cut. Yes.
I visited Camp Schmidt today, and although my children had all gone, I had never gone before. And I've realized, visiting today, with the work they do, they see perhaps three schools a day. The experience and the history of that location, it is a true jewel that should be maintained if we possibly can. I'd like to ask, have you and the executive staff gone to Camp Schmidt?
I've been to Camp Schmidt several years ago, Mr. Armwood.
Okay.
I haven't been this year.
Okay, that, but you have been and you have
I have been, yes, sir.
Experienced the kid there.
I didn't stay overnight.
Yeah, that, that's a little bit too much commitment to ask, okay. When we're also talking about transportation, on the cost per child, would it be fair to be per household, per bus? If you have three children going to the same school, they're sibling, tag-alongs, why would we charge additional for those children? Because those seats are never filled on those buses.
We're factoring all of that into the analysis, Mr. Armwood. And Mr. Dotson is working on that proposal. If, Mr. Dotson, if you have any information to share with respect to that, it'd be helpful.
Good evening. Yeah, on the, the ridership number, we have several situations where the seats are full. Mainly in our elementary and our middle schools, those, those buses are normally at capacity, and we do have good bus utilization for those buses. The high schools are where you may find where the seats aren't full all the time, mainly because high schoolers drive a part of the year, and, and they go to work during the day. You know, if they leave school and go to work, or if they're on a work program or something. But mainly, high schools are the, the situation when the, the seats aren't full. But middle and elementary, we do utilize the buses fully.
Bringing up students driving, what are we charging students to park on school property and have a privilege to drive to school?
I think that's a school-based fee, Mr. Armwood, and all of the high schools, I think, charge a fee. Ms. Golson?
It's a set fee. I want to say $20 or $25. I'll have to go back and look at it.
That appears to be a very low fee. I, I believe I've read where Northern Virginia charges substantially more for the privilege of parking and driving to school. And we might make that a county or system fee as opposed to a school-based fee to better improve our, our money. And another comment on transportation
Mr. Armwood, before you leave the, the fee, I think many schools use that in their school-based activities account to do things for the students in the schools.
Correct. That is correct.
Ms. Golson?
That is correct, but we can go back and investigate about another district. Just know that there are some schools that don't have any student drivers.
Right. So we could go to a profit sharing for those schools that, that have it. And one other comment, it was, it's been said that Montgomery County does not provide transportation to the specialty programs. I've heard somebody say, they do, okay. But Montgomery County, if they do limit that transportation, they have a much better developed public transportation system. And am I correct? Their public transportation?
I, I think it depends on where you live in Montgomery, Mr. Armwood.
Okay. I will get off that subject. Thank you.
But I, I think it's important, though, to, since we're using Montgomery County as, as a comparison, I, I do think it's important to acknowledge that they spend $3,000 more per pupil than we do. I mean, and the $3,000 can buy an awful lot with respect to other materials and equipment and salaries and everything else. But it is a, they do spend a significant amount higher than we do per student.
Well, you triggered where I was not going to go, but I will go there anyway. To the community at large, we need to put our priorities in line with our, with our children. We need to spend and invest what is needed for our children. We need a dedicated and stable funding source for the school system. This is not going to be the last time we're going to go through this problem. It's going to come up next year also. We cannot cut on the back of our students and on the backs of our teachers from now on. You have to go to your legislatures and demand revenue for the school system, stable revenue. And the other counties show where their priorities are. We need to show where our priorities are. Thank you.
Mr. Armwood, and just to answer your first question, it's $16.5 million for non-public transportation.
Are we auditing that and looking for ways to reduce that? For instance, providing the services that triggered the need for non-public transportation?
The, the number's been going down in the last two years, actually, as far as non-public enrollments. So, yeah, it is sort of a combination with special ed, offering the programs in the district, and then obviously, that would reduce the transportation costs.
Thank you.
Ms. Eubanks?
I'd like, I'd like to go back to one of the, one of the slides. A lot of the slides, they actually had amounts that we would save. But there were two slides where I didn't see an amount listed, excuse me, because I'm using a loaner computer. Mine is acting a little funny right now. The ones I'm talking about, about the reorganization of curriculum and instruction and school and teacher leadership, those don't list the amount that we're supposed to save in the reorg.
All right. So, so both of those reorganizations are part of the larger area office reorganization? That is, so the savings for that comes to, what am I missing? About five, $5 million? So, but I will tell you, school leadership and teacher leadership, there's a large portion of that savings because we're going from about 100 FTE down to about eight between the two departments. And the curriculum and instruction reorganization is just really, as Dr. Hyde alluded to earlier, curriculum instruction taking on what the high school consortium used to take on as far as the programmatic stuff like CTE, AP, IB, the, the operating the program. I don't know if Dr. Arbogast wants to elaborate on that anymore.
Programs that had to continue, we slid into curriculum instruction. So actually, there will actually be more people in curriculum instruction than there are for this fiscal year because we absorbed these other programs.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted it out there so that the public would know, because it wasn't listed. And another question I have, and I need to say this again, we can't say it enough. We need to invest in our children. And everything that is up for cut is in our hearts and in our minds. But the things that bother me most are at the beginning, the pre-K and the middle school. We, we need to, we need, we need to find a way to get it done. I can't get past it. And when I get to pre-K, and then that makes me go right to the reading recovery program. And I understand, and I understand the cost, and I understand that it needs to, when the money is found, because I'm going to hope against hope that some money will be found to redo it, but it needs to be at the schools that need it the most. And as well as, just in case it doesn't happen. We can't put more on a first and second grade teacher than they already have on them. I've worked in the school. I subbed in the school. And unless you've done it, and I know a couple of other have spent all day in the school and dealt with everything they have to deal with and still try to teach, you're, you're setting us up for more heartache in the long run. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Dr. Hyde, it's hard to even know where to begin. This is a tough budget, and as I listen to my colleagues, every single person has a issue that causes heartburn. And every single one of those issues vary. They're the same, but they vary. Which sort of leads us to kind of where Mr. Armwood was going. The funding for this budget doesn't come from the Board of Education. And we brag a lot about Montgomery County all the time. But if you pull that chart back up when you have your pie chart, and the percentage that Montgomery County pays for its school system budget compared to the state, the reality is, this is hard stuff that we're dealing with. Right now, it doesn't sound to me that we have a, a response for reading recovery beyond Title I. I asked the question on Saturday, what happens to the other kids then? What, I mean, you know, I might be, I might live in an affluent neighborhood and make good money, but my kid might struggle reading. I didn't mean that was me. It could be applied to anyone else. But the reality is, we don't really have a plan for it. So the question still remains, what we do about students in Title I? And I heard Dr. Arbogast, but I think, you know, my heartburn is from last year to this year is what causes me a little bit on that, to, to really struggle. The, the targeted class sizes appear based on the chart that the K-8 models will suffer the greatest. That's what it looks like, and I assume that's because. So compared to what we, what we had in class size increases last year and this targeted, I still don't understand still don't understand what's the difference? How will we, in other words, are we going to still end up with classes of forty-eight students? Is it different because you're saying it's middle school?
No, not at, we ended up with the large classes that you just described, Madam Chair, because at, primarily at our high schools. And we had some at some of the elementary schools, particularly our small elementary schools that may have had one class per grade, which means that the average across all six grades were well within the staffing ratio. But one grade may have had thirty-seven kids, which means that we either have to make a decision to put another teacher in and have one class of, you know, sixteen, another class of eighteen. I'm sure I didn't get those numbers right, but, and so it works on average. But in the high schools, and one of the things we were trying to make sure was, we did not impact the high schools as significantly as they were impacted a year ago. Because one of the things that we know is that when you add a per student or two students to our larger high schools, particularly our larger high schools, that already have small classes associated with advanced placement in some cases, it could be Spanish four, it could be high-level math, it could be any other small class, then it means that, on average, the numbers work out, but in each individual class, you have small students and then a lot of students. And what we're trying to do is mitigate that to the degree that we can. So one of the things that we have noticed is that primarily the staffing across our middle schools have, because we staff those a different way, they haven't had to deal with forty-five kids in a class. They just have not. And high schools have. And what we found when we went through all of the staffing ratios was that although we say that middle schools have a certain ratio based on the per pupil allotment, many of the classes, on average, were much smaller than elementary and high. And that's why we were targeting an increase to middle schools this year.
You know, and by you saying that, it makes me wonder, when we talk about whether or not class size is the indicator or a significant indicator to student success, and then we look at the struggles that we've had in middle schools over the last year.
And it's where we've had, quite frankly, the smallest classes.
Which is really problematic.
Yeah. And so part of it is, and I would submit, Madam Chair, that, to me, effective instruction matters more. So that matters more. And what we know in research is that when you have an effective teacher, whether you have ten kids or forty kids, the students tend to perform. And when there's not an effective teacher, whether you have ten or forty, kids do not perform. And so part of that is really looking at teacher effectiveness first. However, we know that we had a significant impact a year ago on high school classes. And by going up two per grade, when you apply that across four grades of students, when all ninth graders have to take English, all ninth graders have to take science, and all ninth graders have to take a social studies and a math, then we know that those classes will have certain students in. But then as you move up, eleventh and twelfth grade, when I can now begin to choose classes that I take, and they may, some may have fewer students than others, that average applies across the school. So I may have twenty kids in a twelfth-grade class, but forty kids in a ninth-grade class, but the average would still equal two teachers.
Before I go to round three, oh, well, round two, could you explain again the library-media specialist? Based on what you put on the chart, so you talked about the number of days that library-media specialists would be in the schools. Can you put it in hours? I mean, do you have a situation where you might have, when I say hours, do you have a situation where you're saying they'll be there three days, but based on the school day, it's going to be much less? How much time are they spending in each school?
When you do a staffing formula like point two or point four, you actually do it by the whole day. So a typical schedule for two days a week, they might be there Tuesday, every Tuesday and every Thursday. So if the Tuesday were a holiday, they wouldn't be there. So you think about it, if you try to go to hours, it gets way too complex. So what you want to do is you want to say the number of days that they'll be at that school.
Based on the formula that you've just given us tonight, and you have, I think one section said that library-media specialists would be at a given school for three days a week.
Correct.
You're saying that if their three days are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, there's going to be a library-media specialist, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, for the school day-
Yes.
-at the school?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, point five is a little trickier.
Yeah, I think that's point five.
Point five is a little trickier because there are two ways to do point five. Three days one week, two days the other is one way to do it. Or two days, two full days, and then a half day. But then you have your transportation, and my personal experience is that's not usually the most efficient way. It's usually better to do three days one week, two days another. But that's something that actually works between, principals usually figure that out as they share a staff member. And remember, we have PE teachers and music teachers and art teachers who are working partial days, are not working full-time at any school, so they move from one school to another.
So what's a point two?
Point two is two days a week.
Two days a week.
Point three is three days a week.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're both confused. All right. Okay, I think we want to go to the next round. I have Ms. Beck, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Burrows, and Ms. Boston.
Okay. I still don't get the point, but it's on, it'll be in the minutes. When we went through the budget, we communicated a lot, a series of questions, and the responses have all been posted on the webpage. And contrary to what the newspaper article said, I had no problem finding it. You go to the search box, you type in 2012 budget, and all the Q and As come up. When I went through each one individually, I developed a sheet of where additional focus needed to be. And I know I've communicated this with you, Dr. Hyde, but alternative schools, in particular Annapolis Road, Edgar Allan Poe, and Green Valley. I know that there's nothing we can do about this just by looking at this now. But I think that six-point-four million dollars for two-hundred-and-twenty-three students needs revisiting. It needs, at the very least, an audit so we know we're getting the biggest bang for six-point-four million dollars for two-hundred-and-twenty-three students. Included in that is one-point-one million dollars in busing. Another question I had regarded, choice, the no child left behind busing. Seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine kids for one-point-six million dollars. What are the consequences if we just say we can't do choice? Choice is a real issue for us now because of, first of all, we're transitioning out of that whole model. The other one I looked at was, I think we need to revisit our non-public transportation costs. These are the most fragile students, I agree. Eight-hundred-and-forty-four students for sixteen-point-five million dollars. Sixteen-point-five million dollars. Is there another way? And the idea that I brought to the administration was, for that amount of money, couldn't we translate that money into a non-public program in our county? And not spend it on gas, but spend it creating our own non-public Mecca so that we educate our own challenged children in our community so they're not on buses for four hours a day? And so that their families can participate with the school that's inside the county? That's what I would say would be thinking out of the box when we know we've got to start looking for better ways to spend our money. And we've known for a long time that spending our money on gas is just not getting us what we need. We spend an awful lot of money on gas and buses. And I just think that, me personally, that's the first place I looked in terms of savings. There were a lot of other places for small incremental savings, but nothing that's in your recommendation right now. So what you're asking us to do is to vote on this budget with what we have in front of us, and actually what we just received in front of us, the middle school staffing tonight. And that's really very difficult for me right now.
Miss Beck, to your question about the elimination, if we refuse to do choice, then we run the risk of losing all Title I money. And because it is a requirement based on the fact that we receive Title I funds, so we would put at risk the twenty-six-point-five million in Title I funds that we receive.
Ms. Johnson?
One, Dr. Hyde, clearly, tonight is, as was stated by one of our speakers, is not the end of this discussion. We still have weeks getting into reconciliation, so it isn't over. However, I've been sitting here, and I took the eighty-nine million dollars, and I went through the list that you had on the last, on the slide. And so of the eighty-nine million dollars, which is transportation, we could fund transportation if we, one, eliminate administration, if we eliminate textbooks and supplies, if we eliminate maintenance. That'll get us there. I don't know how many people want to do that. It's about, what are you willing to trade off? Because that's where we are. Or we could get rid of community services, student services, health services, food services, and textbooks. That'll get us the transportation money. It is not that we don't want to do that. Or, Mr. Stansky, I need to ask you, eighty-nine million from five-hundred-and-forty-five million plus are salaries. And the subtraction, I think I did it right, four-hundred-and-fifty-four. Please tell me how much, how many teachers are eighty-nine million, more or less, on average? Because we could do that. When you get the number, we could do that. All of this is real stuff. It's real people. It's real programs. It's real materials. None of it do we want to cut. None of it. We have got to make some tough choices.
It's about a little over a thousand, thousand forty-seven, it would be a thousand forty-seven.
A thousand forty-seven teachers, okay. We want transportation, we can do a thousand forty-seven teachers and keep transportation. Or we can do half of those teachers, five hundred of them, but then we get rid of textbooks. It is real, and this is what bothers me as we talk about, don't cut, I want. Folks, nobody wants to cut. The superintendent and this board, we are struggling. We've got members, you can see, they want sports, they want this, they want special ed. We all want, but the reality is, the bottom line, we got to do a balanced budget. And I am telling you, I don't want to give up all the textbooks, but if that's the consensus, they're gone. No new books. If it's a consensus, we don't do maintenance this year, okay, it's gone. I am saying, those real fast calculations I'm looking at, it's about real stuff. And I am asking my colleagues to spend time, wait, let's get into reconciliation and tinker with this. But folks, the deficit is not going to go away, and we have got to make some tough choices. It's people and it's things. What are we going to do?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Hyde, I just want to go back to reading recovery. I've received some emails from some of the reading recovery teachers, and I thank you for your support in this and your fast replies in this. So based on the data that I've just received, we have over a hundred schools with the reading recovery program, but we only have about forty schools with Title I. And to Ms. Jacob's point, what about the students who are not in Title I? And I feel like, you know, that's in a large part an equity issue. And I honestly feel like a cut in the reading recovery program could very well be an increase in the achievement gap because the students cannot read, they cannot write, they cannot do math, they cannot do science, they cannot do anything if they cannot read. And I would urge the board to save this program by any means necessary. I think it's important that we talk about furloughs. And just to start off with, you proposed three furloughs for your cabinet. I'm very interested to move that up to twelve furloughs, and not just for your cabinet, but for the board as well. That's over a million dollars, and that right there, Ms. Boston, could save middle school athletics. I mean, it's over a million dollars. Twelve furlough days for central office?
For cabinet, it's forty-five thousand dollars a day.
Okay. Based on the slide that I looked at in the beginning, the three furlough days equal to three-hundred-thousand a day? Okay. I do think, nevertheless, I do think that three furlough days is nothing, honestly, and that we should definitely increase that, and not just for your cabinet, but for the board. And that was, and also, one furlough day could save the system five million dollars. And everyone that I talked to said that they would rather take a furlough day than for a program as valuable as reading recovery to be cut, or especially schools' transportation to be cut, or other viable services like class sizes. I think it's an issue that the board should definitely take into consideration. And, you know, I would be very supportive of putting a furlough day in to save reading recovery. And if we do get more money from the state in reconciliation, we can take the furlough day out. But I would hate, I will not vote for a budget that I feel that will expand the achievement gap, and I think reading recovery would do that. I would much rather vote for a budget that saves reading recovery with the furlough, and then we're able to pull the furlough out in the end. So that's just some food for thought.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. As a matter of fact, before I go to Ms. Boston, I did ask staff to cost out three, five, and ten days of furloughs for the board. I'm not sure if you're looking those numbers up. I know last year, when we attempted to do it, it was about twenty-three dollars. It's nine of us. I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just saying that, I mean, we got to be realistic about impact, and I'd gladly do it. But, you know, I want you to also tell us how you're going to use that money.
So one furlough day for board members, and, you know, Mr. Thomas can get into the statutory issues regarding furloughs for board members, would be about six hundred dollars for the nine members for one day?
Six hundred for all nine of us.
Six hundred for one day, yep, for all nine. About seventy a member.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Boston?
You know, I was really, you know, my biggest problem was the increase in class size and elimination of teachers. And when I got the, this email about the chart on the reduction in middle schools, it gave me even a deeper heartburn because, and, you know, truly, I think we all really want to pass this budget, but this is really, really bothering me. I mean, it didn't get real until I really saw how many we're really cutting out of some of our middle schools. And the numbers is just, it's- And the numbers is just, it's, it's something that, to say the least, we have to come up with something. I mean, I, I, I understand that we gotta work through, we, we really got to look, and we really gotta dig a lot deeper to find some cuts to eliminate the amount of staff that we're actually gonna lose out of these middle schools. The one that you showed us in that presentation with the, you know, the elementary and the high school, you know, that didn't look bad, but when you, we pulled up this thing with the middle schools, that, that really looks bad. Because you're talking about some of these schools that may only have two classes in a certain grade, and maybe say, with 80 students, and you divide that in half with two classes, you're talking about already at 42 class, students in, per class. And then you're gonna, on top of that, you're gonna reduce a large amount of staff from that. I, I, I just don't know how. And, and just like some of my colleagues said, I forget which one, but our middle schools are schools that are actually performing the least. And, and I understand what you're saying, it, it has to do with, you know, having a, a, a good teacher in front of those students, but realistically, you know that that is really not, that is something we, we dream about and we wish would happen, but we know for real, that's not really gonna happen in no, no time soon. I mean, that takes a process, and we know all of the teachers that are gonna be in front of our kids are not gonna be able to engage all those kids, you know, well enough to teach them in, in a large setting like that. So I, I just wanted to make that, I just wanted to make that statement. I really have a problem with the large increase in our middle schools.
And I don't have a response for that, Ms. Boston, other than we have, we, we identified a staffing, a targeted staffing formula. We were trying to target away from high schools. We were trying to target away from at lower grades, particularly at the elementary school. Because middle schools were staffed in a different way, most of the middle schools do not have the numbers of students per class as some of our elementary grades, particularly fifth and sixth, and our high school grades, nine through 12. And it became the only area where we could look at a ratio on an average of like 22 to 1. But you're right, it shows you how significantly staffed some of the middle schools are right now, but even with that, they will still be at a ratio of 22 to 1.
And Dr. Height, I wanted to add that last year, when class sizes went up two in high school and two in elementary, there was no increase in middle school staffing last year.
But right now, if I'm looking at this right, we're almost, what, 155 staff out of middle school alone?
Which was about what high schools lost last year.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mr. Harris?
Can you repeat that number again? You said 152 out of, out of middle schools alone, which is gonna equate to about one to two teachers, that's gonna equate to about one to two teachers in every, in every school being lost?
It's 155, Mr. Harris, and it's, it equates to, on average, one or two from most, and then the K8s are more impacted. So the K8s are more richly staffed than the, than the traditional middle schools.
We're, we're supposed to approve a budget today. But when, when I'm looking at the budget, it's just too many unknown answers. The biggest unknown answer for me is definitely reading recovery, what's going to replace it? A program that has success. I just really don't know what is, what's going to replace it. You said interventions, but what are those interventions? And then, especially with our, when, when we don't have the, the resources that we should have, or we didn't, didn't get the funding for the resources, resources we should have. So what are those interventions gonna look like? That, that's, right now, that's my biggest issue, is what's gonna replace reading recovery? At the end of the day, if, if we had to reduce specialty, transportation, I, I can do that, because I at least know that at least a student will get a chance to go there. But reading recovery is something, it's just, it's, I need to know what's going to replace it. I need to know that. And then the National, well, now it's stipends. No COLA, this is how it makes sense to me. No, no step increase, no COLA, no degree advancement, and to go right along with that, to me, no, no stipends. That money can be used somewhere else, that money can go directly to our students. And I just cannot see myself voting for a budget, putting stipends in there when I can go to students, at least for another year. Everybody's taking a hit, that should take a hit too. Everybody's suffering together. So if I had, if I had a vote, knowing that, knowing that we have stipends in this budget right now, I couldn't, I couldn't support that. I really could not. Not having an answer for reading recovery, I, I couldn't, I, I feel I would, I would be doing the students a disservice, approving something that I really don't know the answers for those two things. So that's where I'm at right now. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Madam Chair, I, I just want to respond to Mr. Harris and some of the other comments from some of the other board members. And, and Mr. Harris, in that case, if you had a vote, you would make a recommendation to remove stipends, and then I guess the rest of the board would, would move on those recommendations. But I also want to add this, and you, staff have worked hard to come up with cuts to realize $155 million deficit. And so that deficit is not easy to produce and try to submit a balanced budget. We're attempting to submit a balanced budget, understanding that our budget still has to go to the council, to the county executive, and to the state legislature. And we know that a lot of what can be done moving forward can be done from this point forward. But our goal today was to have a budget, and our goal through this process was to have a budget for the board to submit based on our requirements to submit a budget. I don't, we don't have all of the plans associated with all of the cuts. As I indicated before, it was 47 of them. We're attempting as best we can to make plans, but our work over the last 60 days has to been, has been to produce a budget for the board to vote on that was a balanced budget based on $155 million. So I say all of that to say that we too want to have a plan for what we will do with reading. We do not have that plan today. And we don't have the plan, we, we're working on a lot of these plans, but we do not have what will happen in the event of the lost revenue. What we do know, though, is that we have to submit a budget, and that budget is based on $155 million in cuts. We also know that for the next three months, that we will have an opportunity to reconcile the budget if we get additional monies, and look for ways to add places. And so what we couldn't define our set of priorities for if monies are returned, where those monies would go. And I have heard several suggestions from many of the board members with respect to that, but I think that's, I, I just wanted to submit that as a challenge that we've had in working through this. We've tried, as I indicated, to look at options, but we don't have the options for everything that we've cut out of the budget.
Now, I just want to say, Dr. Height, and to your staff, you guys have done a superb job. When I come in, you guys are always working hard on the budget. Most of the answers, majority of the answers, probably 90, 95% have been answered already. I'm just a little concerned about the answers that have not been answered, and I just believe that we can come back on Saturday, you know, come back on Saturday and, and see if we can, if, if a couple more of those answers are, are answered, then vote on this budget. That's my belief.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Colleagues, Mr. Burrows has buzzed in, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, to suspend the rules. Round three, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions, seeing the motion pass? Ms. Jackson will do round three at three. Mr. Burrows?
Sorry, this is probably my last round of questions. I wanna, I know I've been asking for quite some time to look at our contracts. I believe there's a lot of money that we can cut in contracts that can fund some of these programs. And not just at your level, but even at the school board level. For example, I know we have a contract with a group that I really don't see true value in, and that could save us not much money, but $30,000. And I feel like that could be best spent in the classroom. And so I would really appreciate, between now and reconciliation, a list of contracts with an evaluation, not just from the administration, but at the school board level, you know, up top, how much it costs, and what would the impact be of cutting out this contract, so we can direct those funds to the classroom. I haven't received a detailed, a detailed enough table, chart, to explain that to me, and I would really appreciate that before reconciliation.
We sent you the contracts, Mr. Burrows. Are you asking for the evaluation of all of the contracts as well?
The evaluation and the impact. So is the service effective or not? And what would the impact be, you know, what would that impact be of taking the program out, taking the service out?
And I, what we'll try to do, Mr. Burrows, is get the number of contracts we have, because it's pretty significant. And I'm not so sure we can produce that in that amount of time, but we will take a look at that to see. Mr. Stansky?
Yeah, so, and just, just so we're clear, you know, when I sent, when we sent the, the list of contracts, it's in contracted services. So according to accounting rules, you have to label things contracted services, so, but for instance, like printing in-house, mail, postage, all goes into contracted services, even though it's not a, a contract per se. So I just want to make sure I get your request. So we're looking at probably professional contracts, technical contracts, things of that nature. We, so what we can do is we'll, we'll produce a list of what we have for 11, so now a lot of this, you have to go out for bid for FY12, and the, the dollar number is an estimate, but what we can show you is what that service provides and, and, and things like that. So we will, we will work to get that to you. But just, I just want to be clear, so when you see the line item of $140 million for contracted services, that's not $140 million worth of contracts. There's a lot of different things that go into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. That concludes round three. And that means that we are at the point of making a decision with regard to the budget, which means I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the proposed budget, and I would like to make a statement at a later point, not at this time, but right now, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget that has been presented to us.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. It's been properly moved to second that we accept the superintendent's proposed budget. Any further discussion? Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. Some people have said that this budget is baptism by fire. It certainly has been that, and I've been told that it is the most challenging budget in the last 30 years. In the five weeks since the release of the governor's budget that required an additional $85 million in cuts, the board has heard testimony and received emails from over 600 citizens. Also, the board and the union submitted over 200 written questions that Dr. Height and his staff have responded to and posted online. This budget is a living document. In response to the board and citizen input, Dr. Height has made adjustments to his initial proposed budget. He and his staff are to be recognized for their professionalism and responsiveness during this intense and constricted five-week time period. I would also like to thank my colleagues. I have been enriched by our healthy dialogue and deliberations these past two and a half months. It is very clear to me that we all have a common goal, which is the academic success of our county's children. My 37-year career in working with families and bureaucracies has taught me that the successful process to achieving worthy goals is to keep our eyes on the prize, to look continually to improve and build on individual system strengths, all the while resisting the human impulse to tear down or tear apart. This budget reflects, as many people have already stated, $150 million in cuts. No budget that does that is easy to vote for. There are things that I, like others, have expressed concerns about. The loss of reading recovery for our 1,000-plus first graders who have the most difficulty reading, the transportation issue for specialty programs, the halving, having, putting in half, the media specialist staff, when extensive research has shown that 15% increase in test scores where full-time media specialists are part of the school team. Even with these concerns, given my sense of responsibility and lack of a benefit that a no vote would do, I will vote for this budget. It is a solid budget that provides a lot of specifics, and one in which the government, the superintendent has worked to be responsive and provided a general framework to the subsequent issues raised by both the board and the community. I assure you that between now and the reconciliation period, I will work with my colleagues in continued comprehensive discussions that gets to the details of how, of what is now a general framework for those subsequent issues. This budget will come back to us in May for reconciliation. By the time the budget returns, the remaining details will have been worked out. We will know the adjusted estimates as a result of those details, and we will know our final, final dollar amount from the state and the county. Hopefully, with a continued advocacy of all, it will mean additional monies and not less. Only in May, when we have a full financial picture, will we as a board be able to thoughtfully and comprehensively balance our priorities for program reinstatement. Therefore, colleagues, I will be voting yes on this budget as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to express my appreciation to my colleague, Ms. Higgins, for your articulate dialogue that you just presented. And I agree with you. This has been a most thought-provoking process, and I'd like to commend all of our students and our community for taking an active part in the budget. It's hard. It's not only affecting us here at Prince George's County, here with the schools, but as you all know, on the federal level, we are dealing with budget issues. And so we're all, we're in this together, and like I say, we, we have to work together, and I know we're going to pull together, and certainly we all want what's best for our children, for our students, and certainly for all of our employees. And it is hard, some aspects, it's, it's just very hard. Staff is to be commended, they've been asked questions, I'm sure questions have been worded 10, one question worded 10 different ways, and they've had to come back and respond to us. They have families, and then they, they've worked diligently, and so I would like to commend them. And certainly, while we're voting tonight, as Ms. Higgins has said, when the budget comes back to us for reconciliation, we will know better of what we're going to be doing and what we have to do, and what the true reality is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mr. Armwood?
I also commend Ms. Higgins for the statement which does summarize my feelings, and I want to say that I will also probably vote, I will vote for the budget tonight, but only because I do believe we will be able to make changes and go through the reconciliation process. This is a very difficult budget. It's been said over and over again, and this cannot be the final budget. We must make changes, we will make changes. One of the things that we need to make clear is that we're not waiting until the final budget comes back to make changes and work on details for this budget. We expect Dr. Height and his staff to continue to flesh out their recommendations and the alternatives that we have before us, so that we will have all of the information necessary to make our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood.
and the alternatives that we have before us, so that we will have all of the information necessary to make our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Boston?
I also agree with my colleagues that it spoke prior to me. I have, and I've expressed that, deep concerns over some of the cuts that we're getting ready to make. But I, I believe that my colleagues, along with myself and Dr. Height and his staff, that we can go through during that reconciliation process and find some more money and things that we can cut to address some of the issues that it's given a lot of us a lot of concern. And of course, like I said before, it is that class size that we need to try to find some money from somewhere to address that, and also middle school athletics, we definitely have to address those issues, in my opinion. But I am, I really think that we can do this, and I have faith in my colleagues, that we will find what we need to find.
Sounds almost like it's time to call for the vote. Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, perhaps I didn't push hard enough. Just very quickly, I, I want to thank Ms. Higgins tremendously. Thank you so much. And I say to you, to all of you, out of the fire like the phoenix PGCPs, it will rise. From the irresponsible decisions of the past, worthy though they may have been in intention, they did not build in sustainability, and it has now forced us to shred so much good and such worthy programs right here on the floor. But I believe that Prince George's will be better. Dr. Height, Mr. Stansky, thank you. You have done tremendous work, and your commitment to rebuild the system in a new way, so that it is lean, it is functioning, and it has sustainability. And so I will vote for this budget, and I thank my colleagues who are also going to vote for this budget. None of us are leaving here smiling and happy, but we are committed that PGCPs will rise and become what we all want it to be.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Height, I really want to thank your staff, Mr. Stansky. Your department has truly been very helpful, and you both have served this board extremely well, and I want to thank my colleagues too for their hard work pouring over the budget. Budget questions going out at four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning. I really appreciate your hard work. I actually will not be voting for the budget, and it's not because of anything that the administration has done. I mean, you've worked hard, and I truly commend you on that. I will vote for the budget. There's a possibility that I could support the budget in reconciliation, but I don't want to vote. At least, I can't vote for a budget right now with a lot of things still up in the air. Once I get a better picture of what's going to happen for facts, then I could, you know, vote for the budget. But I want to make very clear, my vote, no on the budget is not because of anything that your staff has done, because you both have worked tirelessly and worked very hard on this. So I just really want to thank you and thank, thank the board for their hard work.
Ms. Beck?
I agree that Mr. Stansky just was invaluable to this work. Invaluable to getting us this far. I think I drowned at him and emails the last few weeks. It was very difficult, and I know I got very testy. But this work is just too important to get to this point and not have answers. I see this really as phase one. And as hard as it is, and excuse me, because I've been up for forty-eight hours. I think I know where every penny is. But I think we have to get this budget over to the county. Because as ungodly as it might seem, there might be more cuts. And we can't throw ourselves over programs right now, because we're only in phase one. And God willing, when we get to the county, they will see the anguish of where we are now. And that, they will be the cavalry that I keep talking about coming over the hill. I have never, never been so anguished. When I think about offering people buyouts for retirement, I think about losing, losing some of the best. It is dismantling our system. We have some wonderful people who have been with us for decades that will now consider retirement. So in that sense, we're losing some of the historical nature of our system. So I will vote yes, if only just to get this budget into the hands of people who have an opportunity to provide more funding. There is nothing else that we can do right now, because we can't raise funds. We have no legislation in Annapolis to help us right now. So essentially, we are the poor beggars taking a budget across the street and asking for help. And so I see that as phase two and phase three, as bringing the budget back here, hopefully with more money, not less. Because the real vote on this budget, and for what we will be held accountable, will happen during the reconciliation process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. On December sixth, when we were sworn in, one of the quotes that really stuck with me, perseverance is the hard work you do after you get tired of doing the hard work you've already did. That's where we are. That's where we are today, but the fact of the matter is, we must continue to persevere. We are legally obligated and duty-bound to submit a budget to Mr. Baker by March the first, two thousand and eleven. But we are all very much in dismay at the state of affairs of this economy and its impact on our children. This is not easy. Over the past few months, we've held hearings, work sessions about Superintendent Height's proposed cuts. Some adjustments have been made regarding the proposal, while other equally important matters remain on the chopping block. To the community, there's enough tears just by the very fact that this is the first time in my tenure on this board that I have actually seen us together as a team go to Annapolis and go to the county council and demand that we want funding adequate for our school system. Your willingness to fight for adequate funding is commendable. Yes, we know that there is a formula in Annapolis that drives funding, but that does not absolve our commitment and our drive to ensure the level of funding that, that we need to meet the needs of our school district. While I will be voting to send this budget to County Executive Baker, I want to make clear that the work has actually just begun. During the next few months, in preparation for the reconciliation period, we will continue to meet regarding this budget. We will have this item on every finance audit and budget meeting agenda. We will continue to have updates at board meetings, and we will continue advocacy at all levels. We have communicated to our county executive, the county council, and our state officials, and we have made clear that we need more funding. For some of you, it is difficult, because you're saying, get more answers, get more answers before you vote. But here is the reality. The reality is, our county officials and our state officials need to know and must know that we are serious about how devastating this budget is. They have to know. So if we continue, which I've seen in times past, to clean up the budget so that it's easier for them to manage, they will never have a clear understanding of where we are. I believe that we must present a budget that we believe to be an accurate account of the state of our system, and that is the basis and justification for our advocacy. If we take a budget to the county right now, that does not include the one hundred and fifty million dollars in cuts, then they will simply say, you didn't need to have it in the first place. We need to be honest with them, and you know what some of the state people said to me Monday night? Are you responsible for sending all these people up here? What was the answer? Well, of course, because they're not used to it. They're not used to seeing Prince George's County go to Annapolis and say, we hold the school board accountable, but we're holding you accountable as well. There are many competing interests, but all are critically important. Transportation, reading recovery, library and media specialists, targeted class sizes, camp Schmidt reductions in force. We still do not know what our funding will be. But we remain, and we remain at bay. We're in a quandary, as we always are this time every year. Until we are aware of what it is from the county and the state, we commit to you that we will continue this work, but we want your commitment that you will too. It does not stop here. There are times in the past where we've submitted a budget, and then we just kind of wait to see what's going to happen. We can't do that this year. Every single step of the way, from now until reconciliation, we have to do that. And remember that perseverance is the hard work you do after you get tired of doing the work you already did. We got to continue doing it. And so I know that you're committed, because we've seen your emails. We've seen your advocacy, and we look forward to continuing hand in hand in doing this work.
Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mrs. Beck? Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Dr. Height, it probably would be a good thing if this was the end of the meeting, so we could go shed some more of these. But I think we have to go back to eight point one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's item eight point one is Board Policy forty-one fifty, leave of absence.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, this was presented to the board. It's in, it's now in as a second reader, and I'll entertain a motion, and, and obviously, we can then have discussion. If you accept. Thank you, Ms. Beck. Second. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the budget, oh, budget is on my brain. That we approve the leave of absence of Board Policy forty-one fifty. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
On, on the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck? Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have registered speakers on non-agenda items. First is Derek Simmons. Mr. Simmons, please come forward. Teresa Petty? Cherie Smith? Benjamin Robinson? Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
You may proceed, sir.
Okay. Good evening to Madam Chair and members of the board and Superintendent Height. I just answered some, just suggestions on possibly saving some money. I don't know if it's going to be implemented for this budget, but maybe for the next one. I was doing a little research, and I want to suggest maybe converting, instead of using printed textbooks, use online textbooks. And you may have to have initial investment of, in e-readers, but I think that would save some money. I don't know the exact amount it could save, but I think it could save some money. Also, a lot of the classic books that are used by English classes, a lot of that's in public domain where it can be downloaded for free, so that would save some money too for its purchase of a lot of the classic books. I don't know exactly how much it would save. I was trying to look at the, I didn't catch the budget for how much money to spend on textbooks. Does anybody have that figure?
Sixteen million.
Sixteen million. Okay, I was just doing preliminary research on the internet. Now, the textbook companies, they arrange their fee structure kind of crazy. But it looks like you could save some money on, on online textbooks, but then you have to either buy the e-readers. But they can also be displayed on computers, which we already have, or on smart boards, which you might not want to make the investment in. But I just make suggestions, you know, have more of the textbooks online. I think it could save some, some money. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We're always open to suggestions, and you should have been on with the budget list, but thank you so much for your comments. Colleagues, that concludes the public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any questions from the follow-up items at the January twentieth board meeting? Seeing none. We've concluded actions for executive session. I'll entertain a motion to affirm actions taken in executive session. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved in second that we confirm actions taken in executive session. The items that were discussed were administrative appointments, administrative transfers, resignation, termination reports, student appeals, employee appeals, and other legal matters. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none. Motion pass. Motion to adjourn.